Going to call the Board of Education for Twinsburg City School District Order. It's Wednesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the board, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solara?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Fadio?
Here.
And we're all here. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any of my colleagues or ministers have any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Seeing none. Good evening and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Wilcox Primary, George D. Dodge Intermediate, and Twinsburg High School. This is the meeting for the Board of Education, October 16th, 2019. I am Rob Felber. I'm honored to serve as your president. Tonight, I want to thank all those that participated in the year-long strategic planning process. Before I do that, however, I thought a short Board of Education 101 might be in order. Besides the regular board meetings that you see before you, two members of the Board of Education are represented on six committees: Buildings and Grounds, Finance, Athletic and Student Activities, Policy, Curriculum and Technology, and the Business Advisory Council. Additionally, we have one member representing the board as a legislative liaison and also respectfully the student achievement liaison for the Ohio School Board Association. Additionally, the board and administration meet in a work session yearly to identify goals for the year. Another multi-year process is the ongoing facilities assessment that was started several years ago. So to bring that to perspective, the board engaged administrators, parents, businesses, residents, and students in a year-long strategic planning process. You can see on the slide to most of your lefts. The slide you see before you shows the timeline for this process that started just over one year ago. There were literally hundreds of volunteers that were segmented into six groups: Finance, 21st Century Teaching and Learning, Communications, Curriculum and Climate, Safety, and Facilities and Grounds. Recently, over two board work sessions, the board heard from three groups each night. Later this month, the board will meet once again in a work session to discuss the recommendations of all six groups. Anticipated action on the strategic plan will take place at a board meeting early next month. Again, I want to thank all of you that helped research, plan, debate, and recommend all the actions that were presented. But tonight, we also have some amazing students joining us, so I'd like to go ahead and turn the meeting over to Superintendent Powers for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, everyone. We have a packed house, and it's always great to see our families come out and be represented so very well. We have such great students here, and this evening is no exception to be able to celebrate some of the great things that our students are doing here in the district. But before we do that, I have a number of announcements. And, Mr. Felber, thank you for acknowledging the work of the action teams once again. It has been a very busy year. We actually started October 1st of 2018. And actually, before October 1st of 2018, there was a year before that where we engaged the community in focus groups that started to identify the six areas that ultimately became the goals in mind for the action team. So it has been a long process. We are almost at the depot. We have a couple more meetings to be had until we can finally put the period on the work of the Strategic Planning Committee. So we appreciate everyone's participation. We had, as Mr. Felber said, hundreds of people involved in that work, and it was fine work, hard work, collaborative work. But we look forward to presenting the strategic plan in November for the board's consideration and hopeful approval. So thank you for that. Board of Education, our annual Fill the Bus campaign is underway. You see that on all of our sign boards. Please help us fill one of our school buses with non-perishable food items, which will benefit the Emergency Assistance Center. And the Emergency Assistance Center is our partner in our Pause on Child Hunger program here in the school district. The Fill the Bus campaign is a friendly competition between the Twinsburg Tigers and the Nardonia Knights. And each year, we compete to see which district can fill the bus to the fullest amount. Collectives are available at all of our schools and at the Board of Education office, and the deadline is Friday, November 1st. So if you can help with that effort, that would be great. It goes a long way in stopping hunger here in our community, and we appreciate Mrs. Joyce Hunt, who is the executive director of the Emergency Assistance Center, for her continued support of our Pause on Child Hunger program. It's a great program, and it benefits many of our students here in our community. A reminder that the first quarter of this school year ends this Friday. How did that happen? I don't know. It just seemed the first day of school was here, and now we're at the end of the first quarter. So it's going by really fast, isn't it, guys? Kids, yeah, for sure. Okay. This evening, we're going to hear two administrative reports. The first one will be presented by our curriculum director, Mrs. Jennifer Varding, and our new Director of Student Wellness, Dr. Andrea Walker. And it will regard the district's continuous improvement plans and the continuous improvement plans for each of our school buildings. The second report will be provided by Mr. Norm Potter, and he is our curriculum consultant. And that report is going to be an update regarding the academy at Twinsburg High School. So both reports very important, and we look forward to those starting here shortly. Also, Board of Education, as a notation on the new business section of the agenda, you will find a recommendation for the 2020-2021 academic calendar, and Mrs. Varding is going to call it up here on the screen shortly. Per statute, a traditional school district Board of Education must hold a public hearing at least 30 days prior to the adoption of its school calendar. Tonight's agenda provides this opportunity and ample time for members of our community to provide feedback before the board will take action regarding the calendar at its meeting on November 20th. The calendar that you will find on your agenda this evening and which is projected up here on the screen has a couple of very interesting highlights, and I'd like to share those with you this evening. First of all, if the board approves this calendar on November 20th, the first day of school for the 2020-21 school year will be Wednesday, August 19th. Students would not have school on Monday, September 28th, as that will be a curriculum day, and that day will also align with Yom Kippur, which would provide an opportunity for our families of the Jewish faith to celebrate their holy day. Winter break would once again be two full weeks, beginning on Monday, December 21st, and extending through Monday, January 4th, with students resuming school on Tuesday, January 5th. And then, please note, February is very different than what has been historically here in our school district. In years past, the school district would be closed for the students and staff on the Friday before President's Day. This is a different look to February, and in this case, students would not have school nor the staff on Monday, February 8th, and then on President's Day, Monday, February 15th. So there would be two Mondays in a row that school would not be in session. The reason for the recommendation actually came from the high school staff, and with a blue-and-white schedule as it currently is configured at the high school, it's very difficult when you have a Friday and a Monday off on the same weekend, because students would not be seen by their teachers for many days on a blue-and-white schedule. And so this recommendation is coming forward from the high school staff, and it was actually supported by a great number of staff members, and so that's the recommendation here this evening. Spring break would be scheduled from Monday, March 29th through Monday, April 4th, and that's on the Easter holiday weekend, with students returning to school on Tuesday, April 5th. And the last day of school would be Thursday, May 27th for students and Friday, May 28th for the members of our staff who are certificated members of the staff. So again, the academic calendar will appear on the agenda for the November 20th meeting. Following the board meeting tonight, we will actually post this proposed calendar on the district website with my email address, so anyone who would like to send comments about that calendar or suggestions, and then in turn, I will forward those over to the Board of Education. They will make their final decision at the board meeting on Monday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, November 20th. So that is the proposed calendar for 2021, and we're about two months early on this proposal. We heard from our families last year that by waiting till January to approve the school calendar, many parents weren't able to make plans for the summer vacation, and so we worked on the detail to get it done earlier. Thank you, parents, for giving us that feedback. And so we're early by about two months here in the approval of the 2021 calendar. And I want to thank the members of the Twinsburg Education Association who helped us to create a number of drafts that were reviewed by members of our staff, and this is the calendar that was most favorable. So that is that in a nutshell. Finally, this evening, Board of Education, I don't know if Andre Young is here tonight. Ah, you are here. Come on up, Andre. Andre, why don't you stop by over that podium over there? So, Board of Education, Andre might look familiar to you, because last year, he was here, and he is a very talented student when it comes to the design of video. And every year, the Ohio School Boards Association asks students from across the state to create and submit videos for consideration for the OSBA conference in November. And this year, once again, our very talented student has created a video. And before we show it, I wanted to ask Andre if he would very kindly give the Board of Education some idea as to the concept behind your video. Come and speak to the microphone here.
I've got so many projects going on.
Stand up for Ohio Public Schools?
Oh, yes. So the goal with the OSBA contest this year was to stand up for Ohio Public Schools and explain why Ohio Public Schools are so helpful and really drive home the importance that they have on the greater, the communities of Ohio and how much they really do, because I feel like some people sometimes feel that Ohio Public Schools might not be doing enough, but they actually do more than people might realize.
So with that concept, we'd like to share with you for the very first time the premiere of Andre's video, and take it away, Mr. Gatawski.
Ohio School Boards Association, Stand Up for Public Schools. Ohio has many great public schools. There are many great opportunities for all of our students. Here are some of the great things public schools can offer. Public schools are dedicated, given to somewhere in life that they need. Enroll in college, employ in a company, and listen to their own forces. The academy program provides opportunities for students to explore the possibilities they had after graduation. Each student has the opportunity to pursue various career fields and educational pathways. School credit classes allow students to earn high school and college credit while staying in the high school. The college board's exposure classes also provide opportunities for college credit and more regular resources. The county has a history of service established since 1972 by eight public school districts to provide career technical high school programs about education, K-12 career education, and community services. The Twinsburg High School is just one example of many, many schools. Ohio Public Schools provide great opportunities for all students. Keep Ohio Public Schools on a path of success. Help your community and stand up for Ohio Public Schools.
Certificate for you that Mr. Sol is going to take a picture, so turn it around. Congratulations. And if this is selected at OSBA, we're all going down as your cheerleaders. We go down every year, but this will give us, you know, we're going to make a whole day of it with popcorn and Twinsburg sunglasses, dress the part, and hopefully, we'll be cheering you on if selected to be shown. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Board of Education, Andre is an example of the fine students that we have at Twinsburg High School, so much talent. And he is always looking for opportunities to hone his skills and to submit submissions for contests and such. And I know it's a win, right? So we're looking forward to hearing that you are the winning video for the state of Ohio, and if not, you're the winning video in our community, and we do appreciate all your efforts in representing us so very well. So thank you, Andre, and thank you to mom and dad for being here as Andre's representatives this evening. We appreciate that. So Board of Education, we have a lot of students to celebrate tonight, and so I want to ask Ms. Lynn Villa from Wilcox Primary School to please come forward, because Wilcox rocks, and we're going to find out why that is right now.
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much, Ms. Powers.
Am I on? Oh, yes, I am. Now I am. I would love it if Mrs. Butros would come and join me, and she's going to help us out with our awards. So every month, we have the opportunity to acknowledge some of our kindergarten, first grader, and preschoolers who have done an amazing job. Every morning, we say the Wilcox pledge, and we talk about being responsible, being respectful, being caring, and being safe. And we're always watching for our students who are fabulous citizens. So some of the children you meet tonight are going to show you just by Wilcox Rocks. And then I can see that their teachers are also here, and the teachers are the ones who nominated them, so when your student is called, please come on up with them and be the rock standing behind them, because we can't do it without you. So our first student is a first grader in Mrs. Lynn's class, and it is Manul Rupasange. I'm going to do this. Rupasange. Is Manul here? Yes, he is. Manul rocks because he is respectful and caring. He's always willing to help others, and he does so on his own accord. When a new student arrives in our class, Manul helped the student adjust to the classroom and guided him when he was unsure of the directions. Manul is always willing to help both in and out of the classroom, and he puts others before himself. He's why Wilcox rocks. Our next student is Calvin Ednison in Mrs. Ferrelllo's class. Calvin is the leader in the classroom. He always has a smile. He's so energetic about learning and can't wait to show what he knows and what he's practiced, such as his sight words and reading a new story. Calvin is always very polite and the first one to help out a friend in need. Calvin is a hard worker, and Mrs. Ferrelllo can't wait to watch him shine the rest of first grade. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to welcome Maddie Babanack in Mrs. Nysley's class. Maddie has been such a great classroom citizen since the first day of school. She's kind, caring, helpful, and always ready to learn. Maddie can be seen in our room, reading with her friends and helping others. She's an excellent student and a friend in our classroom. Way to go, Maddie. And moving on to our kindergarten students, we have Claire Quinn in Mrs. Petras's class. Wilcox rocks because of Claire. She's a kind friend and a good worker. One day, a classmate was very sad, and Claire helped her feel better. She talked to her so kindly and was such a good friend. Claire always does her best, and Mrs. Petras is so happy to have her in her kindergarten class this year. In Mrs. Troy's class, we have Colin King. Colin, come on up. Colin is a great student in every way. He listens during lessons, he raises his hand to answer questions, and he helps his friends whenever needed. Colin enters the classroom each day with a big smile and always has a great attitude. He's kind, considerate, and a good friend to everyone. He makes Wilcox a super place to grow and learn, and Wilcox really rocks because of Colin. Mrs. Iyani nominated Benito Cantolamesa. Here he is. There he is. Okay. Mrs. Iyani is happy to nominate Benito because, for the Wilcox Rocks Award, he comes to school each day with a smile on his face, and he's always ready to learn. He's an excellent role model, and he helps other students in the class. Benito shows kindness when he asks other students to play with him at recess who don't have anyone to play with. When another classmate got hurt, Benito went up to her and asked her if she was okay. Wilcox rocks because of you. Ava Barton in Mrs. Terzak's class is next. Ava starts each day out with a smile and ready to learn. She's very helpful in the classroom with others, especially helping others tie their shoes. That's a really big thing in our building. That helps Mrs. Terzak out a lot. Ava also takes her time and does her best work. She asks great questions and enjoys stories and discussions. Ava, you rock. And next, we have Gavin Holford from Mrs. Sutton's kindergarten class. Gavin is a fantastic student who is patient, kind, helpful, and respectful. He is a wonderful example to his other classmates and is one to always try his best. Gavin always wants to help other students and truly has a caring heart. He's a shining star, and Mrs. Sutton is so proud to have him in her class. And we have two preschoolers tonight. Henry Steiner in Mrs. Jay's class. And I see Mrs. Jay up there. Henry is a joy to teach. He always has a smile on his face. He loves to participate in discussions, lessons, and activities. He always has meaningful information to give. Henry is a good friend to others. He is helpful and caring. Henry Steiner rocks. We'd like to welcome Graham Heinrichs in Miss Turpex's class. Oh, I can hear him. Graham is an all-around, hard-working student. He's very enthusiastic about learning, and he enjoys sharing his knowledge with others. He's always the first one to volunteer to help a friend in need or around the classroom. Graham always comes to school in a happy, upbeat mood with a great sense of humor. When a classmate is sad, Graham is very consoling and tries to help his friend by providing positive thoughts. He's a delight to have in class and is very deserving of this award. And those ladies and gentlemen are our Wilcox Rocks students for October. Okay, boys and girls, we are super proud of you. I love the way that you are holding your certificates right in front of your tummies. Give everybody a big smile, because I know they want to get a photo op here. But in front of your tummy, not in front of your face. I want to see a really big smile. Okay. Okay, let's give them one more round of applause. And you could go back to moms and dads, but I would like Mrs. Petras and Mrs. Ferrelllo to stay up on the stage. So you know that our teachers behind our students rock. That goes without saying. But we also wanted to acknowledge each month some other staff members who sometimes are behind the scenes that help to make sure that our school is running smoothly. And this month, Mrs. Ferrelllo and Mrs. Petras nominated Lerline McNair. So Ms. McNair, come on up. She, Ms. Val Woods. She keeps all of our technology at Wilcox running nice and smoothly. I have to stop and give her a quick hug. Wait. Hugging? No hugging. Oh, she's making her shake hands. Hug. So they both nominated her, and we consolidated their nominations into one together. So here we go. Ms. McNair has been so very helpful in setting up programs for teachers and students to use in the computer lab. She also has helped the four blended learning teachers with the new Chromebooks in the classroom. Ms. McNair is so positive and easygoing and never complains. She goes way above and beyond for teachers, such as setting up classes with usernames and passwords and all the multiple websites we utilize. She makes the teachers' jobs much easier, and we want her to know how truly appreciative we are of her. Thanks, Lerline, for all your help. You rock. Thank you so much. We are going to pass it on to Dodge, I think. Yes, we are.
So good evening, everyone. We're excited to be here. It's been a great start to our school year. One of the things that we always do is I try to think of something to share at our board meetings. And so you know that we always encourage leadership, and you'll hear that from our students, but this time, we did a little something different in terms of the principal's report. And so every month, we have Pizza with the Principal. And Pizza with the Principal, students get an opportunity to earn tokens of success, and those are opportunities for kids to be caught making good choices on their own. And so this week, we had Pizza with the Principal, and we asked the kids, what about Dodge would you like us to share at our PTA meeting? And so our group of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, not here tonight, but we'll recognize them anyway, said that they were most proud this school year of their opportunities to work on Fill the Bus, which is an opportunity for us to collect donations for our hungry members in our community, and there's still time to donate at Dodge, if you're interested. They also said they were most proud of their Polymer Knight, which was last night, thanks to our PTA, which was very successful. And one thing that they were really excited about, and we're about halfway through, is their book fair. And the best thing about their book fair, sponsored again by our PTA, is that the students get an opportunity to not only buy books and read, but they have the opportunity to just sit and enjoy the books that they're getting. So we thank our PTA for that. If you would like to see some pictures about any of those things that are going on at Dodge, please feel free to follow us at Dodge, shameless plug, at Dodge Tigers, at Twinsburg Dodge on our Twitter feed. At this time, though, we are going to recognize the students that were recognized by their classroom teachers for making good choices all this month. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Walker.
Good evening, everyone. To my left over here, we have some sixth-grade student leaders who are going to help us introduce our current students of the month.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Gerner. Character counts at George D. Dodge Intermediate School. The following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments. The character word for fourth-grade students for this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule, are tolerant of differences, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of feelings of others, do not threaten, hit, or hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, assault, and disagreements. The fourth-grade students of the month for Ms. Magnus, Ms. Polka, and Ms. Offer's homeroom are Angela Lee Fetzko, Ava Orevetz, and Aiden Salmon.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Aspinall. The character words for fifth-grade student council for this quarter is caring. Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. The fifth-grade students of the month from Mrs. Bush and Mr. Schultz's homerooms are Kyler Hoon and Angela Jackson. Kyler Hoon and Angela Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Brody Elias. The character word for the 6th grade students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means you do your share to make the school and community better. You cooperate, you get involved in community affairs, you stay informed, vote, you are a good neighbor, you obey laws and rules, you respect authority, you protect the environment, and you volunteer in the school, community, and community in large. The 6th grade students for the month, Ms. Madden, Ms. McGing, Mrs. Plodick, and Mr. Wheelock's homerooms are Xavier Hunt, Anaya Jones, Marquell Nichols, and Caitlin Trujillo.
So please join me in celebrating this month's Students of the Month. So this is a great opportunity for photos, parents. I want to not only recognize our Students of the Month, but can we also recognize our speakers? This is not easy, standing in front of a large number of grown people, and they did a fantastic job. And I'd also like to thank our parents coming out when it's raining and it's cold to get everybody here, especially our speakers. So let's give our parents a round of applause. If you want one last picture, boys and girls, hold your certificates up, not over those smiles. Let's give our parents a chance to take a nice photo. I think our teachers are taking more photos than anyone. Thank you, boys and girls. So just, we know that this is truly a partnership, our partnership with our parents, with our students, but also with our teachers. And so this time, we wanted to recognize a few teachers as well.
Okay, so at Dodge, we know that leadership is very important. And again, we cannot encourage our students to be leaders without great people around them. And I think Ms. Villa said it best. You know, sometimes those people that are behind the scenes, that you never see, are the ones that keep everything going. So there were two staff members nominated. I know one could not make it tonight because he didn't want to leave his shift at work. But one is Mr. Mike Ayers. Mr. Ayers came to us this year at Dodge as one, a member of our janitorial team. And one of the reasons why he was nominated by Ms. Stacy Keys, another member of the team, is because she said, "Mr. Ayers came in, stepped in place, and it was like not missing a beat. He is gone above and beyond to join the team and really make Dodge shine." And I know that walking around the halls and seeing him work is absolutely inspirational, to see the pride that he takes. And he wants to do a great job, and he wants to make that building shine for our students. So we appreciate the work that he does. In addition to that, Mrs. Joan Rossman nominated Mrs. Jen Fosnight as our Top Tiger of the Month. Mrs. Fosnight teaches 6th grade language arts at Dodge. And one of the reasons that Mrs. Rossman nominated her was the fact that she's done such a great job with helping with our blended learning program. Is Ms. Fosnight here? Okay, I didn't think I saw her there. But she's done such a great job with helping staff and jumping in with our blended learning. She always goes above and beyond for students, bends over backwards to help colleagues. So we're really proud of her work as well. Now, we have some great staff members here who thought, I think, that we forgot about them. So if our Dodge staff can please stand, pretty please, come on, I know you can do it. These are members of, or team members of a lot of the students that were Students of the Month at Dodge, and they came out to support their students. So thank you so much for what you did tonight, but each and every day with our kiddos.
So this time, we're going to turn it over to the high school. Dr. Hebert, can you upgrade the cuteness factor this month?
So the running joke is, you know, I have to follow all this cuteness with high school. So we just bring it with the brains and the brawn and, you know, the artistic stuff. So that's what we're bringing with you tonight. So I do have a few great students to recognize. I also should let you know that a lot of great students are right now playing volleyball in postseason play and standing out there in that mess at soccer, trying to make it to the next level. So we've got kids everywhere tonight, including here, but some of the kids that we were going to recognize are also participating in that other part of their life. So we're going to start with academics. We have two students with us tonight who participated in the National Merit Scholarship Program last year. They're seniors this year. Many of you have gotten my emails and my voicemails and my nagging about the modified schedule today, because today was PSAT and pre-ACT. So some of these kids that you'll see tonight are wiped out from giving 100%. But the fruits of their labor are going to be soon seen with these next two students. Could Rebecca Mold and Kevin Onion please come forward? Okay, put it in front of your tummies. The National Merit Scholarship Program recognizes approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation for their exceptional academic promise. These two students placed among the top 50,000 scores of more than 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 competition by taking the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in '28. I don't, I don't do the math, but I'm pretty sure that's pretty good. So we're very, very proud of Kevin Onion and Rebecca Mold. Congratulations. So moving from academics to the arts, six of our THS band members have been selected to perform as members of the 2019 Bowling Green State University Honor Band. Tonight, in the audience, we have Michael Burley, I think Anthony Cardeman, Logan Kennicutt, and Grace Springer. Are they here? If they were, if I called your name, please come forward. The Bowling Green State University Honor Band's performance will take place on Saturday, November 23rd, at 1:00 on the Bowling Green State University campus. Our students will get the direct instruction from clinicians and college music faculty as they prepare for their performance. Michael Burley plays the trombone, Logan plays the trumpet, and Grace plays the flute. And they were selected based on the strength of their applications for this awesome opportunity. So we want to recognize them. And did you already come over here and shake hands? Get on over here. You're blowing my cuteness factor. And you can see, Michael also plays football. So, I mean, we've got it going on. We also do Students of the Month. This month, it's Students of the Month who are safe or have demonstrated safety or the ability to understand how important safety is in a school. Our first Student of the Month is Kyle Apple. Kyle's big enough to play football. He plays football. All right. Kyle is an unsung leader through his continued participation on the football team and in his academics. He has continued to participate in the football experience after having a year-ending surgery by leading the younger players with his knowledge. Academically, Kyle works hard in his classes and leads by an example, a student that is always willing to go the extra mile to help other students out. In addition, Kyle is a member of the Student Leadership Board, selected to be part of this group of influencers by the athletic director and the football coach. In this capacity, he works to create the team feeling within the school, working to craft a positive culture and climate throughout the building. Kyle Apple. Next, we have 10th grader Logan Pry. So Logan is here after taking the pre-ACT today. So we know she's tired after three hours of testing. Logan is always ready to help peers in class. Several of her classmates are clearly more engaged because of her encouragement and interest in group activities. She never says a word about her own successes. She is always ready with a kind word when her classmates express frustration. The sensitivity Logan shows to others brings such a positive energy to our entire classroom, creating a safe environment for learning. Logan Pry. Okay, everybody have a big smile, because this is the time. Come on, now, this is cute, right here. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, guys. You know, it's fun to be here on this night when we see the small children from Wilcox and all the way up to the high school and the progress. You were once them, and they will someday be you. And we're just really proud of all of our students and all of their success. So thank you for being here this evening. Mr. Felber, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Well, I know it's kind of rainy and crummy out there. Don't get excited, kids. It's not time for the pajamas inside out. Spoons aren't going to work quite yet. But if you do want to go home and get a little snack, get some homework done, you're more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but this would be a good time if you'd like to leave. They never stay.
They should come all the way up to the front. Come on, all the way up. There's plenty of room up here, boys.
All for the boys.
No, they're never moving up.
Okay, we're just about ready to go, so I'm going to go ahead and continue with committee reports. Do any of my colleagues have committees to report?
Yes, the Curriculum and Technology Committee met October 7th at 6:00 at Chamberlain Middle School. And it's pretty lengthy, actually. They gave welcoming and introductions. And Mrs. Farthing, the Director of Curriculum, gave an overview of kind of what the committee does, that we're a subcommittee of the Board of Education. And she kind of went over, you know, the role and responsibilities of the committee. And then Norm did a presentation. Norm Potter, for those who don't know who Norm is. He did a presentation. He talked about the academy, the high school. But he also went over testing, career, college and career, teacher training, federal grants, and data analysis. And he did a really nice job in explaining a tool that we use here in Twinsburg called Depth of Knowledge. It's known as DOK. You often hear that refrain. And a lot of districts use this tool. And they really use it for purposes of when they're doing assessments, that ensuring that the assessments that we give our kids have the proper rigor and alignment to state standards. But what he also talked about, and what teachers talked about when using Depth of Knowledge for teaching, is that they kind of dig deeper and they make sure that they're pushing our students to achieve more based on the levels of depth of knowledge. And it's the world that I live in in education, but I thought for someone that is not in education, and a lot of parents serve on the Curriculum and Technology Committee, I thought he did a good job of putting it in layman's terms so that they kind of understand what it means and how we use it, and how it helps us drive instruction and make sure that students are achieving at a high level. So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged that publicly. Also, there were curriculum updates. We talked about the summer reading camp that happened. We had approximately 120 students that participated in that. The KPP update, the Chromebook Initiative at the high school, which is complete, and RBC. Also, the Chrome card, the card is complete, and next year, we're going to be looking for Dodge as a rollout. Additionally, we talked about professional development, focus for teachers, and providing gifted services. They talked about Project Lead the Way. I know that the superintendent has talked about that a few times. Also, the Curriculum Day that we had, talked about, you know, what was going to be going on there, also what was just discussed with sophomores taking the pre-ACT and all juniors taking the PSAT for our National Assessment Day that Dr. Hebert spoke about. Talked about the strategic plan that had its first rollout, as well as 21st Century Learning and Communications and Finance, and also, you know, those report outs to the work sessions that we had as a board. Talked about the continuous improvement plans that we'll be talking about this evening, so I won't go into detail about that. In addition, we always talk about the adoption of texts. So we, there was a discussion about the adoption of two titles, Namesake by Jempa, I can't even spell, I can't even, I'm not even going to present the last name, and then Their Eyes Were Watching God by Zora Neale Hurston. And I thought that Liz Teeter, the teacher, did a really, really nice job of kind of talking about what the texts mean and why they chose them and why it's going to be meaningful to not only our teachers, but our students. Additionally, we also adopted another title, The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas for 10th Grade English. And again, another text that is relevant and timely for the students of today. I think that the Curriculum Committee and our teachers are really doing a nice job of making sure that there's cultural relevance in the texts that we have and offer our students. And so these adoptions, which we'll vote on this evening, you know, I thought that they were great choices. And let's see, we also adopted a serial podcast for English 10 course, and Megan Holzimer did a nice job of explaining that. And I actually got some more context from Dr. Hebert around the podcast and how entertaining it is. So I have not taken that up yet, but I will, so that I can be up to speed on that. And then Norm also did another update in terms of just kind of the third-year implementation of the academy and some opportunities that are going to be coming up in the next rotation. And then also, save the date. And then also saved the date for a potential meeting that we may be having on December 9th. And an email is going to go out determining whether or not we're going to need that, so that's just kind of out there for if we need it. And that concludes my report for the Curriculum and Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Are there any other committees reporting out tonight? Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Powers for administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. As mentioned previously, we have two reports to share with you tonight. The first will be presented by our Director of Curriculum, Mrs. Jennifer Farthing, and our new Director of Student Wellness, Dr. Andrea Walker, who will introduce to you our concept behind the district and the school's continuous improvement plans. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening to present the Quarter One Continuous Improvement Plans. The presentation this evening is to give you background for the work we're going to be doing this year. I am joined by my administrative colleagues, however, I have the pleasure of presenting this evening, so please know that I represent all of us, and we work collaboratively on the presentation for tonight. As you will see, oops, there we go. As you will see, we are carrying out the theme of moving the needle forward as we did last year, and we are trying to move that red needle towards full. At the October 2nd meeting, I presented the 2018-2019 Local Report Card, and just as a reminder, here is a snapshot of our data. On our report card, there are always areas for growth, and there are also areas for celebration that we talked about last time. Here is a chart with how our local comparison districts compare to us. Our yearly targets change, our comparison districts ebb and flow, and we are continually aiming to improve and grow. On this chart, we're very happy with our progress that we've made. Again, like I just said on the last slide, there's areas we can always grow in, but in general, we're very happy with the progress that we made. We had some questions about how our local report card was calculated. So in September, we spoke with the Local Report Card Director at the Ohio Department of Education. Administratively, we had a conference call, and we talked through our questions and our concerns. At that time, we were given two pieces of advice. Those two pieces of advice were to align the curriculum to the standards, and also to increase our depth of knowledge. So Mr. Curtis has already taken care of like the next part of the presentation. Thank you. In relation to our standards alignment, that is something that is an always ongoing process, and we are continually refining that. As the Local Report Card uses our performance index, which is the weighted average of our student performance, as you see on there, advanced as a reminder gets a 1.2, accelerated 1.1, and moving the way down the chart, the Local Report Card is going to continue to use that performance index for more measures. We determined that an area that would help us with our performance index and help our learners in general would be to focus on the depth of knowledge. So to give you a little bit of background on the depth of knowledge, it was created by a gentleman called Norman Webb back in 1997. I did not realize it's been around that long. When I did some research, it says that the wheel is not really his. He does more of a stair-step approach, and he actually called it, someone online called it the Wheel of Misfortune, so we don't want to go with that. But we're going to say that within this depth of knowledge, we have his concepts, and again, his name was Norman Webb. The majority of, a lot of instruction happens at Level 1 and 2. Level 1 and 2 are recall, reproduce the data, the details, the procedures, answer questions. Typically, it's one answer that is correct, and it's, you know, an answer if it's in text, it's right there in the text. You can consider that knowledge acquisition and application. Level 3 requires our learners to have strategic thinking, and typically, there's more than one right answer, or there's more than one way to get at that answer. And you can think about that as knowledge analysis. Then Level 4, where there are a lot less words, that is to extend your thinking and real-world applications. That would be how the students would use the questions at that level, kind of thinking of it is knowledge augmentation. Our students will not experience questions at that Level 4 on the Ohio State Test, but it is still something for real-world applications that our students should be working on. The key with using the Depth of Knowledge wheel is what happens after the verb. So all those words are verbs, but it's what are you doing with it afterwards? So for example, in Level 2, it's a graph, but what are you doing after you graph something? Are you going to compare and contrast it? Are you going to do something else with that graph? So the key is taking that verb and then doing something with it afterwards. Some areas of concern, or areas for growth that we have are compare and contrast, and modeling and reasoning, and those fall within the Level 3. And those are areas that we have had for weakness for years. It's not something that's new, it's not just with a cohort of students, it's something that we experience difficulty or weakness with, and that's something that we will use as an area of growth. This chart here just is another example showing you what the Level 1, 2, 3, and 4 So to connect the dots and put it all together, we have this graphic right here. And this graphic was designed by the administrative team, and Mr. Holland finished it up for us. So this went through many iterations, but what we determined is, based on our conversation with the Ohio Department of Education, that we should focus on curricular alignment, which that is one of our main focuses, that's what we do, we also need to focus on the depth of knowledge. We know that the heart of everything we do is high-quality instruction, because that's the best thing that's going to give our students performance is high-quality instruction. So that's at the center of it all. Then going out of that, we are having all of our goals for this year, so we're going to talk about math, English Language Arts, social and emotional learning, and PBIS. But we really liked how the graphic had the high-quality instruction at the middle, the depth of knowledge on the outside of it, and then each of the areas that we're working on. Our CIP goals are similar to the past because we are still using the performance index for our measure. However, within that, our focus is going to be on the depth of knowledge. So our CIP goal for English Language Arts is on the screen, and you can see it, and our goal percentage for performance index is an 87.8, because that is the minimum score we should be getting for English Language Arts. So when you see our CIPs in the future, the action steps underneath that are going to be focused on depth of knowledge and taking our students to that next level and moving deeper with the content. I did forget one thing when I was back talking about the depth of knowledge. One thing we want to make sure, that we know that depth of knowledge doesn't mean that things are more difficult for our students, but it's the rigor of the task and the cognitive rigor and what the students have to do with it, so it doesn't just mean that depth of knowledge does not equal difficult, and I forgot that, I apologize. Our performance index goal for math is an 84.2, so when we talk with our, have our plans approved by the Board of Education, you will see things in there on modeling and reasoning, and taking things deeper with the depth of knowledge. Our third goal for the CIP is our PBIS goal, and I will read it. During the 1920 school year, the Twinsburg City School District will continue to provide continuity of positive behavior intervention supports, also known as PBIS, services for all of our students, and expand and promote collaboration with our families and communities regarding prevention practices and school-based trauma within the PBIS framework. And as we talked about a lot of our sessions on our Curriculum Day, it was just last Wednesday, we had a large social-emotional track for our teachers and support staff that they could take part of. And our next goal is social and emotional learning, and I am going to turn it over to Dr. Walker.
Good evening. I just wanted to talk briefly about the social-emotional learning goals that we're going to have this school year. First, we're going to start with a needs assessment, and that is going to be broken down into three goals that I think are pretty reflective of a task that we're going to undertake. So when we look at that, we found a needs assessment by Castle. Castle is a collaborative for social-emotional learning, and they have tons of research that will help us to develop what we need to look at in the district. It has about 24 questions on there, and we can rate ourselves to see where we fall. And so there's going to be three measurements that I'm going to be looking for district-wide. First, when we collect the data, we're going to analyze it in real time, and we want to look for our staff and students' skills, their skill level, and then their competencies. And what I'll be looking for specifically is what adequate SEL or social-emotional learning programming we have, determine our evidence-based programs and delivery models, and also understanding the depth and the breadth of select programmings that we are utilizing. The second goal of that is measuring student and staff development of social-emotional learning skills over time, looking at the individual, class, school, and district levels. And with that, we'll be identifying programming that should be implemented universally throughout the district, but also looking at programming that should be targeted. So for instance, universal programs, everybody should have certain skills, but there may be certain pockets of students that we need to target specifically, and we want to make sure that we have an umbrella of services that catches children if they need so, if they need assistance. And then also, we want to determine how existing programming will work in concert with other social-emotional learning and wellness initiatives. So for instance, when they talked about, when PBIS was discussed, that will work in concert with social-emotional learning, and it shouldn't, although they are two separate programs, they should work in concert with one another. And lastly, we'd like to evaluate the effectiveness of the social-emotional learning programings based on student development of our social-emotional learning competencies, and there are five competencies that students should be able to recognize specific to their grade level. And so there's a lot of work to be done. We have a needs assessment that is done, but we're still working with stakeholders, and we should get that out soon, and hopefully have more things to talk about in the coming months.
Before you run away...
Yes.
Hopefully an easier question. Assessments, what kind of timeline are we looking at from assessment to reevaluation to reportable data? Is this a quarterly? Is this six months from now?
So for me, the needs assessment, I would like to have that done, at least the first round of it done by the end of November. That's the target, that's the target right now. I have other stakeholders I need to put into play, though, to make sure the assessments are fair, equitable, there's a lot of other things that may need to be adjusted. Then once that is in place, then we determine what programming meets our students' needs real-time, and then from there, we'll do another assessment closer toward the end of the year, but I'm thinking more or less March, because once the end of the year comes, there's, you know, it's fun. So I would like to make sure that we have another assessment to make sure we're doing every, finding all the holes, and then go back forward, you know, into the next school year.
Excellent, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other colleagues have questions, comments? Thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
So Dr. Walker is probably going to be a regular visitor up here to this podium, and also to the Curriculum and Technology Committee. So I'd just like to end with thanking you for your support. The timeline for the CIP is moving ahead, hopefully within November, most likely November 20th, we will have them to you for approval. The building teams have been attending professional development at the ESC in Northeast Ohio. We have other sessions planned for November, December, and January. We also will be working with our staff members on our Professional Development Day on November 5th. Then most likely January, we'll have a CIP update for you. And then thank you for your support as we take that needle and move it, you know, like from three-quarters of a tank to a full tank, so thank you for your support this evening.
Floor it.
Pardon me?
Floor it.
Floor it. That's how we feel. Thank you, Mr. Felber. That is exactly correct.
That's the layman's terms. Mark probably has a technical term. Thank you. Any other further questions or comments?
And thank you to the team for being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Before Mrs. Farthing leaves the podium, we just want to, all of us want to thank her and her staff for last week and our Curriculum Day. My gosh, if you have talked to any member of our staff, it was a tremendous day, and the neat thing about it was everyone could select what kind of learning they wanted to engage in, and sessions switched, and it was just a phenomenal opportunity. You know, when we have staff members that are learning at that level, then learning in the classroom with the students is really increased too. So just publicly, I wanted to thank you for all of your efforts, Jen.
Thank you, and it was a team effort. I could, Beth Mary Olin and I did it together, and the tech team really pulled together, so thank you. It was a great day, but thank you.
Thanks.
Our second presentation this evening is with Mr. Potter, and as Mr. Curtis already mentioned, Mr. Potter presented parts and bits of this last week at the Curriculum Technology Committee meeting. We're pretty excited, Board of Education. As you know, Mr. Potter and Dr. Hebert, Mrs. Eberhart, who is the Executive Director of the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, and I will be presenting at the OSBA Conference about the academy at Twinsburg High School. Across the state of Ohio, this is being seen as a model program. And so before we get down to fine-tuning our presentation for OSBA, we wanted to update the Board about some of the nice things that are happening over at the high school in regard to our program. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Curtis, the layman's terms is just because I have a very limited vocabulary, so that's why it's so easy for people to understand me. I want to thank the School Board, Mrs. Powers, Mrs. Farthing especially, for all your support in building the academy. Seems to me, three years ago when I was standing here, we were very unsure about where this was going to go, and we rolled it out to one class at that time, and we really didn't have an expectation of how large this could get. We were hoping for, and I've said this many, many times, 20 kids and five businesses, and as we go through this, you'll see that we've gone much, much further. I also want to thank Dr. Hebert for her bringing in a new perspective and getting the curriculum involved at a higher level. Mrs. McKinney, who's now getting more involved with our students, Mrs. Houston, who's been involved. The Business Advisory Committee that meets once a month has really been beneficial in helping us, helped guiding the academy on where we should be going. And all the parents, students, and partners, we couldn't have done that without them. So to recap what we've done so far, we've hosted 60 formal academy events during the last two school years. That includes classroom speakers, site visits, teacher site visits, internships, medical research with our students, and some employment opportunities. These multiple events have been attended by students and parents, and we now have parents that are now seeking out other events for their students that we don't offer, but now that they are engaged, they are looking for those other opportunities on their own, which is phenomenal. We've offered various summer camps, medical camps, and computer camps, and those are growing. We had a mentoring event that was successful. We've had a few job fairs, and again, we've secured some employment for our students through those job fairs. And we had, this past September, we had a great opening night with our three very dynamic speakers. If you didn't have an opportunity, you missed out, because they were really a great group of people. So like I said, three years ago, we rolled this out to just the freshman class who are now juniors. And when we look through where we're at now, we've had 2,835 hours of time logged outside of the school day by our students. There are 263 current students that have been at different academy events. 64 of them are seniors, so kids that aren't even officially in the academy are still coming out. I have talked to a few of them, and they go, "I don't know what I'm doing, and I think it's time for me to start looking." And that's exactly what we're trying to avoid with the other groups. We also have three RBC students that are attending events. They have older brothers and sisters, and now they're interested, and they're going down the same path. Even prior to that, we've had 73 graduates that went to events before they left here for the same reason I just described. They weren't sure what they wanted to do, and they wanted to make some connections. We now offer new course pathways with a finer documentation of how we get through different pathways for career. We're going to continue with our events, and we have twin talks that are scheduled. We had a little hiccup on the first one, and my second speaker now has a medical issue, so now we're trying to rearrange the second one. But we have an audiologist coming in, a gentleman that does AI for the Northeast Ohio Sewer River District, Sewer District. We have Brianna Schultz, who works for Manufacturing Works, Jennifer Going Smith, who was also on our panel for opening night. She's the IT Director for the Eaton Corporation and a very supportive member of the community that's been involved since day one. Erin Grossman with Talent Launch, Alan Zingle, who runs Two Time Tutoring, and Shane Biglow, who is the ONAM, and he's the president of ONAM, but also that deals with blockchains. One of the concerns that I currently see, and it's a small one, when we have some turnover in the businesses that we're partners with, if the wrong person leaves, then they sort of lose track of what's going on. So that's, that's one of the things we have to be aware of. One of the businesses just lost their main contact with us, and the person that was gathering your emails said, "I don't know what this is, and I need you to come talk with me." So at least they're interested, but you never know what you're going to get when that kind of thing happens, but life happens, so we move forward. So moving forward, one of the things I've been talking with students about when I go to the high school is the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. Most of the students that have been involved in this academy since day one, they're pretty well-lined up to be able to be eligible for those seals. There are some things that will have to do paperwork-wise and also mentoring-wise, but they're right on the right path. UH Ahuja is building a $200 million resource center, and they asked Mrs. Powers and myself to come out and talk with them about how they could better support our academy and their project. They're going to be giving more information as that comes out, but it sounds like an amazing opportunity for our kids. like an amazing opportunity for our kids, and it's something that, they came to us and said, "Hey, we have something for you." So, really, a, a nice gesture, and $200 million is not a bad thing either. We are working on some development options, because we're finding that one of the key pieces is the, are the site visits. And we are always making sure that we're trying to find the best way to get students there without spending money, and we've had some sponsorships. The Wright Board sponsored some, and we have some private donors that have done that. But to make the experience whole, we're going to try to look for other, other options for that purpose. And you have been generous in, in supporting that also, but we just want to make sure that's contained in the program in and of itself. We have a lot better ties with our high school curriculum. Again, Dr. Hebert has been spectacular in putting some classes together and getting the teachers motivated, which then gets the students motivated. We're expanding the program, and we're starting to have talks with the middle school and how we can do a junior-type academy, just to build those skills, because we're finding that the skills at the high school level, sometimes are a little too late, and we have to start catching some of those other skills a little bit earlier. Internship possibilities, we are working on with several different organizations, and that's, I think, hopefully will come to fruition in a very short amount of time. All the events that are planned already this year, and as Mrs. Powers said, we will be speaking at the OSBA Conference, and we want you to save the date for March 7. The Twinsburg Foundation and the academy has put together an event with the Cleveland Cavaliers, and we'll be able to spend a night there and watch the game against the Denver Nuggets. But previously to the game, or prior to the game, we'll be allowed to have discussions with behind-the-scenes people of what their job is and what it entails. That will be open to parents and students, so they can all see that with the purchase of the ticket. And they'll be able to get the tour and hear from scoreboard operators, custodians, whatever they line up, that's what they're going to put together. They were actually very excited by that, because usually, the schools just want to hear from the CEO. We want to hear from everybody, since that's our goal of the academy. So, we are moving forward at a, at a very good pace. Kids are excited. We have a good group of kids that are working and getting ready for their future, and we have all the right people in place. Right now, it's just a matter of putting it all together, and usually, you know, you're, this is a negative thing, usually when you say it, that you're building the plane as you fly, but we're also being cognizant of what our kids need. And so, as we're building this, listening to our students, we're listening to the teachers, and we're making those accommodations where we can, and making sure it's what's best for students. That's the presentation. Any questions? Yes?
Roughly how many businesses now?
Ninety, the last I checked, 95, and those businesses range anywhere from, hey, I get an email, to, you know, UH doing what they do, and Cleveland Clinic doing what they do. So, there, it really is a range of what they are able to support and what they expect out of the academy.
And a shameless plug for Norm. I was with a client the other day and a new HR director, and I said, "Hey, I wanted to make sure you know." She goes, "I know all about it. I've talked to Norm. You can get re-engaged," and, you know, so, and the outreach was already there, so, and they're right, right in touch.
Thank you.
Percentage increase. I know one of the, you know, one of the main concerns we had when we started this was the influx of community business partners, and we wanted to make sure that we had enough kids involved in the program. So, I know we've, we've done a few different things, and you've kind of gone about it a few different ways, to help grow the program with the students. You know, your numbers sounded good, you know, as far as this year as opposed to last year. Are we substantially growing?
Yes, we are. When, when we did the opening night recognition, the second-year students, we had 11 students that got first-year recognition. Eight really continued through the program to be able to give the second-year recognition. The next group, the first-year recognition students, was 44. So, really has grown, and not all of them showed up for the evening, because they still aren't really sure what they're going to do, but they put in the hours already, and some of them aren't claiming they're part of the academy, but they've put in, you know, 12 hours of time on their own. So, those are the types of kids that I'm trying to reach out to and just talk with about the benefits of being involved in this. It really is non-threatening, since it's voluntary. You show up when you want to, but when it comes time for those internships and the connections, we're finding that that connection in and of itself is huge. We have top-notch students that second year that, when I ask them for a resume, because we're trying to put a little blurb out there for our partners about these kids, they're not familiar with a good resume. So, these are our top-notch kids that are struggling trying to put their things together in a cohesive manner that makes sense, and so, we're just finding, again, something that we need to do a little bit better in one of our classes to make sure that that happens.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I really like the idea that you're starting to reach out to the, the younger ones at RBC. Now, are there any plans on, and I don't know if you've done or not, are there any plans on having any kind of assembly or academy night for parents and students coming up this year?
Not, we have to talk with Mr. Reese, but I've been working with Mrs. Moore about the Junior Academy Program, and we actually met today for a short amount of time to try to develop some of these things as we go, and hopefully, we'll start some in-school stuff very soon, and then we'll see how that builds from there.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, that's an excellent idea, and even getting some of the current academy students to kind of talk with the RBC students in almost, not quite mentor, but at least get them introduced to it and...
Were you reading my notes?
But, but I like the idea of starting with our RBC students, and I think it's, I mean, because it's been such a great program, and I know they're like 12, 13 years old already looking into activities with STEM and robotics and things like that.
Well, and we also know that the communication skills can start in kindergarten. So, being able to fine tune that and develop a program that will suit everybody, it may not be the work-ready skills in the kindergarten level, but their communication skills. So, knowing that there's going to be a continuum K-12, that will help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For the questions, comments? Mrs. Powers?
No, we're just very proud of this program, and especially grateful to Mr. Potter and his attention to making it what it is today, and it's getting better every day. Really excited about the middle school part of this, and then our ready program for career development, starting with our youngest kids. So, thank you for your support. This is one of those programs that really hasn't caused a huge investment financially on the part of the board, because we have such generous local business owners who just really want to help our kids get on the right path. And so, we appreciate all of our business. We really appreciate the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce and the leadership of Megan Eberhart over there. And again, thank you, Mr. Potter, for being the guy at the front of this one, because this has been a huge undertaking, and it wouldn't be what it is today if it wasn't for Mr. Potter and his leadership. So, thank you. That concludes our reports.
All right. Thank you. We are at remonstrance. Any cards for our young students? This would be the part of the meeting that those that wanted to address the board could, but we don't have anybody that's chosen to do that. So, I will move on to Treasurers, Report, and Recommendations, and without objection from my colleagues, read all three under H. H. 1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the following: Meeting Minutes, regular meeting of September 4, 2019, and September 25, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. 2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of August 2019, Baker Reconciliation, General Fund Financial Summary Report, and Financial Report by Fund, as sent to the board under separate cover. H. 3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of August 2019. The total on clothing payroll, $4,857,564 and 11 cents. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Tie. I'll go, I'll go to my left. Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Mr. Solera, since he was so close on the first. Any discussion, comments? Marty, anything? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFaboio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those three items pass 5-0. Now, move on to action items personnel. Again, without objection, read those three items. I-1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I-1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. 2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And finally, I-3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit for the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeFaboio. I did want to point out one fairly interesting note. Unfortunately, we, we may be saying goodbye to our transportation supervisor, Adam House, who's gotten a fantastic opportunity a little closer to home. But if you look at the agenda, we're accepting the resignation pending that we find a suitable replacement in due time. So, we are not letting him necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Powers, out of his contract until we actually have that position filled, but we are acknowledging that tonight. Is that...
That is accurate.
That is accurate. Okay, I got one right. Any further comments or discussion on this personnel? Roll call.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFaboio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those three items pass 5-0. Moving on to action items, new business, phew, 1 through 11. All right. J-1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. 2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education, in accordance with Board Policy 9211, acknowledging the following district support organizations: Twinsburg City School District Parent Teacher Association, THS RBC Parent Teacher Association, George G. Dodge Intermediate School Parent Teacher Association, Samuel Bissell Elementary School Parent Teacher Association, Wilcox Primary School Teacher Association, Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, Twinsburg Band Boosters, Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters, Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters, and the Twinsburg Schools Foundation. 3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended trip for 5th grade students from George G. Dodge Intermediate School to travel through the Henry Ford Museum and Village in Dearborn, Michigan. One group will travel May 7th and 8th, 2020, and one group will travel May 21st and 22nd, 2020. The trip will be paid in full by the students, as sent to the board under separate. 4, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopt the namesake, and I, Mr. Curtis couldn't do it, so I'm not going to do it, for the English 10 Honors Course Reading List at Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on October 7, 2019. 5, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopt "Their Eyes Were Watching God" by Zora Neale Hurston for the English 10 Honors Course Reading List at Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved again by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on October 7, 2019. 6, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopt "The Hate U Give" by Angie Thompson for the English 10 Course Reading List at Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on October 7, 2019. 7, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopt Serial Podcast Scrubbed Version for the English 10 Course Materials at Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on October 7, 2019. 8, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the revised job description for Central Office Receptionists per the attached exhibit J-8. 9, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the job description for Secretary, Director of Human Resources per the attached exhibit J-9. 10, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the job description for District Records Clerk per the attached exhibit J-10. And finally, 11, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the conditional employment of Gustavus Critchlow as a substitute teacher effective October 1, 2019, per the terms of negotiated agreement with the Twinsburg Education Association, Article 8, Contracts M. Mr. Critchlow will be compensated the regular substitute rate and will not be eligible for health insurance benefits other than COBRA. This rate will be in effect until Mr. Critchlow renews his teaching license or until the 2019, 2020 school year concludes. Do I have a motion for those 11 items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs., Mr. Curtis, excuse me. Mrs. Powers, did you want to touch on J-2?
I do. Board of Education, per your policy annually, our district support organizations must submit to Marty and me a copy of their bylaws, any changes to their 501(c)(3) status, a copy of their budget, et cetera. There's a whole list in Policy 9211, and all of our district support organizations have done so for the year. The reason there's a pause here, and the reason we take this in October, is that our PTAs all have to get approval first from Ohio PTA, and so, they have to submit all that information to that organization that happens at the end of summer, and we didn't want to just bring some of the organizations and then not everyone at one time. So, once Ohio PTA authorized the, PTAs here in our school district by their channel of approval, they all came back to us, and that is the purpose for them being on the agenda tonight. This would allow these organizations to fall under the district's liability insurance when they have events here in the school district, with the exception that they were to do something with like, have a jumpy house or something like that, that has a risk attached to it, they would have to have additional assurance for those kinds of events. Other than that, they now fall under our district insurance for liability purposes. It also gives them the ability to use the district logo and such on their literature. So, we appreciate all of these organizations, and the other thing I wanted to mention is, back in June, we had a representative from the Auditor's Office here in the district, and that person actually helped all of these organizations get their paperwork in line with regard to what they can and cannot do with 501(c)(3) and such, and so, they are, they take their responsibility to be good stewards of their members' dollars very seriously, and they make good decisions based on the information that they have now. And so, we appreciate their leadership. We appreciate them coming to that meeting in June, and making sure everything has been submitted, and I appreciate your approval of the recognition of being district support organizations following tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Any further, any other items? I'm just acknowledging the great work that we already heard reported on from Mr. Curtis on the curriculum and technology. A lot of, it sounds like a lot of great reads in a podcast that I need to look into. Any further comments? Roll call.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFaboio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those 11 items pass 5-0. 12, resolve that the Twins Board of Education holds this public hearing to give notice of the recommendation of the 2020-21 academic calendar and to provide an opportunity for public comment per the attached exhibit J-12. Is there a motion for, as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. DeFaboio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. And again, we heard about this a little bit in Superintendent Powers' report. What you may not know is, the law changed a couple of years ago, where we actually have to do this 30-day period, so it starts tonight. I believe November 20th is the next meeting where we would approve this calendar with any changes from people. And we've already, I've already received one email, you know, regarding the calendar. So, any further comments or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. DeFaboio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those five, and those, that one item passes 5-0. We are now at miscellaneous, and I'm steering at two young gentlemen. South pause, so go left-handers, and I'm just curious, you know, you don't have to say anything, but is it a school project, or are you just really interested in government?
Uh, we, we are Boy Scouts, and we're here as part of our communications merit badge, just wants the requirements to attend a sort of board meeting-ish thing and take notes.
Excellent. Well, we've, we've had the honor of honoring a lot of Eagle Scouts and Gold Award winners, so hopefully, at some point in the future, you'll be up here with your Eagle Scout, and it'd be great to see. So, if you have any questions, I'm sure any of my colleagues or myself would be happy to answer. We are at miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything for miscellaneous? Okay.
Board of Education, just an announcement. Monday, October 21st, the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce and the Twinsburg Council PTA are co-hosting Candidates Night, and that will be held at RB Chamber of the Middle School in the auditorium. I'm to understand, doors open at 6:00 with the event beginning at 6:30, and we are proud to host that event that is for the election on the November ballot. All candidates who are on the ballot have been invited by Mrs. Eberhart to participate. Speaking with her yesterday, it sounds like most are going to be there. So, for members of our community that would like to hear directly from the candidates, their positions, their platforms, that would be a great opportunity to come to the middle school that night and to get a firsthand look at what the candidates are all about. And again, we appreciate the fact that they asked us to hold the event on our property, and our district council PTA under the leadership of Joanne Schaus is working really hard with the chamber. It should be a really good event that night.
Excellent. And that's the general election, November 5, and having been under the lights, good luck to all those that will be up on stage or entertaining that event. Any further comments from miscellaneous? Okay, the board does have need for executive session, so I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:30 to discuss employment discipline and compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A. I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFaboio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.